Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's nice to see some new faces here. My name is Lisa Hevner. I'm the first select woman for the town of Simsbury. This is our regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen meeting. We hold generally two every month. Very pleased to see you here. We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask John Cody to please lead us in that pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to begin our meeting with a public hearing. This is regarding the Simsbury Grange, of which I am a member, so I am going to recuse and turn the chair over to Chris Kelly.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll start with public audience. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? Okay. So let me just explain. This public audience is in relation to the public hearing on the Grange proposals. Joe, at the beginning of the board, we'll conclude the public hearing, then we'll have another public session for the board meeting. So with that said, we'll start there, and then Mr. Koushman will go to you. And our...
Yep. You'll have an opportunity to go as well.
And as you come up, we just asked that you give your name, your address, and we do limit public audience to five minutes per person, so.
Sure. I'll be super quick. My name is Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Simsbury Grange and the applications that we've submitted for the Neighborhood Assistance Act. So these applications are not for money. It's for the individuals to have the opportunity to make a donation to the Grange and get some level of tax credit for that donation to the Grange. So we submitted two applications. The Grange has been here since 1931. It was kind of founder-ing because a lot of the members were getting older and were unable to keep it up. A few of us got together a few years ago, kind of pulled the Grange back together, and we've been working towards rehabbing the building and getting things up to snuff, and we have a very successful agricultural fair every year, which is the only certified fair in the Farmington Valley. So while I explain the rest of my grant applications, I... We just received our brochures for all of the Connecticut fairs for this year, so the fairs are a real fun time. A lot of old-time stuff, homemade things, animals, activities, local vendors. So if anyone wants to go to the fair, I'll pass this around.
Thank you.
So that's going to be on September 16th this year. Since we have kind of gotten the Grange back together, we got a loan from the State Grange for a new furnace. We're currently paying that off. One of our applications is for energy conservation projects. We'd like to get new windows, insulation, et cetera, to help with upgrading the facility on those fronts. The other grant that we submitted is related to jobs training and making the Grange a better community kitchen and community service in terms of training people for food preparation, maybe vending at farmers' markets, starting catering businesses, et cetera. So that would involve kind of rehabbing the Grange inside and out to serve that purpose and helping people to be able to attend workshops that we're ready to sponsor. People who are members are trained in all kinds of probiotic preparation, fermenting, canning, jamming, all kinds of things. So that's sort of the broad scope of what these grants are about. As I said, it's not for money. It's for the opportunity to people make it... For people to make a tax donation. And the other goal that I have for the Grange is my real job. I study a dietary therapy for epilepsy, and I'd like to make the Grange facility available for families who have children that are prescribed this special diet to be kind of a community center for them to get together and prepare this special food that kids eat on the diet. And I've already written a proposal to the State Grange for $150 for that purpose and written to all of the state masters of the National Grange explaining that. I don't have letters for everyone, but I brought one for the select people. I just want to note that in this letter, I tried to make it seem super easy because I want them to be interested. It's not as easy as it looks in the letter, but it's still possible, and I'd like to have our Grange be essentially the first Grange in the nation to support this and then be able to expand it beyond our Grange. So that's my basic presentation, and I don't know if anyone has any questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Any questions for Susan at this point? Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Mr. Koushman?
Thank you for giving me the privilege to address the board regarding this matter. And I just found out about it, I think, a day or so ago. And what more or less brought me here to speak on this this evening is the fact that on the 16th of the month, we're going to decide whether or not we want to accept the Board of Finances and the Board of Selectmen's recommendations and approve a budget. The budget is going to be increased. You're going to get a tax increase.
Just a...
No, speaking related. You're...
This is in relation to the matter.
Okay.
This is in relation... And if you object, madam, stand up and tell me what your objection is.
Mr. Koushman, this is related to the Grange issue, which you've indicated is, so we will give you your time, your five minutes to speak to it.
Okay. Okay. Let me get my thought back. And I attended all the budget meetings, and it seems a little frivolous and spend-thrift if you go out and you cut the police budget, which was done by this board. They cut $7,000 from the police department's ammunition stockpile. They cut $10,000 from the repair of the squad cars. In other words, the maintenance of the squad cars were budgeted $10,000, and they cut it. And now, after making these cuts and threatening your public service or public safety, because if you're a business, they won't be able to come to you if you're being robbed because they won't be able to shoot the robber because they won't have the bullets. And chances are, if they try to get into the squad car to go to your home to save a life, they won't be able to start the cruiser to get to where you are because it hasn't been maintained. Now, this is what's going on. And we're spending nickel after nickel after nickel on frivolous matters. We go out and we buy $15,000 because somebody needs a go-kart for the performing arts because they can't walk on less than an acre. So we go out, and this board sat, and they gave them $15,000. When I asked the board, "What are you doing it for?", they said, "It's in the budget." So it's in the budget, let's spend it. But they don't have the money to spend. And now that the government, state that is, has come in and said, "We're not going to fund yous anymore." And to this hour, they still don't know what the proposal is going to be on the state tax from the governor. They have no idea what they're going to suggest. They don't know how much they're going to have to pay. And the trick they pull is they're going to reserve, and they're saying, "Well, we're not raising the taxes. We're taking the money out of reserve." And you know, and I know, you take that money out of reserve, your credit rating is going... The bond rating is going to go right through the floor. And that's how they work on Wall Street. So you can get in your chauffeur-driven limousine and drive up to Wall Street, and as soon as they hear that you're into your reserve cash, you're going to lose your bond rating.
Mr. Koushman?
Don't take my word.
Mr. Koushman, I just want to let you know you're at four minutes. I'm just... You've got one minute to connect it back to the specific content of the hearing.
So getting back to the item here, being that a public hearing, usually they let you talk as long as you want, but getting back to the item here, we do not have the money to start giving money to the Grange. We didn't give any money to our veterans. Why all of a sudden do we have to give money to the Grange? If they want to support, do like we veterans do. Support your own organization. And you're talking about a grant. They're telling them they've got a grant. There's no assurance that they're going to have that grant. So we could end up holding the bag for $15,000 when the state or the granting authority says, "We're not going to give you the grant."
Mr. Koushman, it's been five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. K.
Hi. I'm a little concerned about the submission. I think that the Grange does a fine job, and there's nothing wrong with the Grange. However, I think that the application... The expenditures that they're using is inappropriate for tax relief, for people to donate money. I don't think kitchen tools and supplies and establishment of indoor/outdoor cooking and teaching areas, sponsor-host tape series, eight workshops, tri... Trains, stipends, kitchen training time, and then there's a 10% administration cost for these activities. Money is tight, and this appears to be a frivolous action, and I think money can be raised in other ways, and I think that we ought to really tighten our belts. Money should be raised appropriately from other sources, but when you say you get a grant, that's our money. And I don't think that these organizations should come and ask for money and ask the people to benefit them with a tax credit on these appears to be a frivolous action. So I think if it's really serious, we all want to help, but this is not serious, and I don't think we have to help. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in public audience? You've already spoken once, so what I'd like to do is close the hearing at this point. Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All who say aye?
Aye.
Any nay? So carried. With that said, let Lisa... So the Grange item is on our Board of Selectmen agenda as item number A. So we'll be coming back to the actual vote on the issue.
So before we begin public audience, I do need to amend the agenda, and I'm requesting an amendment to the agenda to include an item to authorize the first select woman to seek party status before the Connecticut Siting Council for the Tobacco Valley Solar Proposal. May I have a motion to amend the agenda after item A to add an agenda item to authorize the first select woman to seek party status before the Connecticut Siting Council?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will now move on to public audience. At public audience, per the rules of the Board of Selectmen, we let any member of the audience speak for five minutes. If anyone feels that that is not enough time to convey their information to the board, we're very happy to meet with you at any time. At a different date or time, just call our office. Any member of the board would be happy to meet with you. So with that, we will begin public audience, and we'll go from left to right, and we'll start with Chris. Oh, sorry. Chris?
Do you mind if I...
Yes, please. If you could just state your name and address, that would be great.
Hi. I'm Chris Barnett, 15 Oxy Oak Drive, and I'm here as a resident... A longtime resident of Simsbury. I'm here to plead to the board to take a position on the proposed solar facility that Deepwater Wind is proposing. I recognize there's no application at the time, but they're about to make that application very quickly. If you look at the spirit of what the Environmental Council in the state of Connecticut did in their February 3rd report, they stated that the appropriate place for these solar utility facilities are brownfields, old industrial sites, and landfills, not residential neighborhoods. It's interesting that there was five RFPs chosen for the state of Connecticut, all of which are benefiting Massachusetts utilities, none of which are benefiting state of Connecticut in any way, in terms of utility rates or electric capacity in our state. They're being sold back to Massachusetts. There is one in New Fairfield. There's one here. There's one in Palm-Frit. There was one in Canterbury, and I don't remember the other one. My apologies. This is a turning point in our town to maintain the... We have done a very, very good job over the decades, planning and zoning our town to maintain the character that we have, which we all know and we speak to many times as one of the great resources of our town and what attracts people, to move here, to do business here, and to continue to stay here. It's going to change the shape of the north end of town for the next 20 years. There is no guarantee that after that 20-year period that it will be reverted back to farmland or forests because it's a private... It potentially is a private purchase. This can continue to be a solar utility facility that does not benefit the state or the town forever. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. From left to right. Sorry.
Hi. My name is Stacy Flamini. I'm at Three Kilborn Farms. I'm here in opposition of the utility-scale solar facility. I'm not against solar, but what I am against is the failure to find brownfields, industrial sites, and landfields in the state. On February 3rd, the state of Connecticut Environmental Agency issued a report which concluded that solar farms should be placed on brownfields, industrial sites, and landfills, not on farmland. I support our local farmers and see that all five parcels are actively being farmed, and they have been for at least the 13 years that I've lived here. This is the largest project in New England, and it does not belong on 290 acres of farm and forest in a residential area. We ask that you advocate for us in this town and protest the utility-scale solar facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Going from left to right? Joe? Oh, I didn't see you. If you guys could just raise your hands and let me know. So, all right. Thank you, guys.
Good evening. My name is Michael Flamini, Three Kilborn Farms. I want to thank the board for its leadership, but I'm going to ask you to continue to lean in and lead the town with even more vigor. The group of citizens who are directly affected by this have come to the conclusion that time is running out, daylight is burning. We know the application, which you do not have yet, and we recognize that, will be submitted soon, and we're building a coalition of concerned citizens. We're learning our facts, and there are a few facts that I wanted to reiterate based on the town hall meeting that was conducted last week. Number one is that the amount of revenue raised from this project is de minimis. Our collective estimate is that it'll be a 0.5% impact on our total budget. So when we think about an ROI on a project of this size and this scope, I would hope that this board and the Siting Council would recognize that there are significant costs associated with a project like this, including impact on home values, including disruption of people who live in the community and have to deal with for 12 to 18 months, construction and trucks, and safety issues associated with the community in which Squadron Line is a central location. Number two is that the town citizens who would be left with this in their backyard receive no benefit in terms of electricity rates, that the electricity is shipped out of the state and into a New England consortium, of which a number of unelected officials have made the selection of this location, which we think is fundamentally unfair and counter to any democratic process that I've ever seen or understood. Number three, there'll be significant clearing of woods in order to make these lots available to generate the kind of solar power that they need. That's certainly not in the spirit of what this town is all about. Number four, none of the five parcels of land... And this has been, I think, a debate online, for those of you who have seen it. There's been some chatter that these are all contaminated sites and they're not active farm parcels, when in fact, if you drive by, they are actively being farmed as we speak. And we believe the documents on the town's website suggest that they are not contaminated, that that has been resolved through a series of processes several years ago. So one of our jobs, we recognize, is to get the facts out to the community so that citizens can make up their own mind. We are not opposed to solar. We are opposed to the unresponsible nature in which this project has been dumped on our laps. And so we look forward again to continuing to work with this group to fight and to represent the will of the people that elected you to this office. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I saw some hands in the back. Oh, we're still going left to right, so we'll go in the front here. Yeah?
It's my honor to come here to share my voice. I'm from China. Came to U.S. almost 18 years. Okay. So share a little bit of story about my experience in China. Really, now they are doing better, I hope, but when I... In my memory, my officials, you know, they are... We have Communist Party, right? Okay. Those people, those officials, really, they didn't represent us. They are paid, you know, by the taxpayers, but really, they care about their promotion, but really not the people. When I came to U.S., I really feel, you know, I can feel the fresh air, seriously. And, you know, the officials are elected, and really, you are willing to represent the residents. And because you really care about the people, just like, you know, we just pledged, right? We want the justice for all. I believe people, when you see it, you really need it. So for the solar farm project, my voice is no. The reason I say no, not because I am against solar energy. It's clean energy. It's really for the future. I'm against it is because, you know... Actually, I'm thrilled to see the solar farms along the... I'm working in Boston, so I travel a lot. I was very happy to see that. So I'm against about this project because the magnitude and the location. So the current plan will use farms, and we'll cut the trees. That's really not the idea to use the solar panel, right? You really want to get the environment better, not to at the cost of those stuff. And the only reason to do it here is because the site is close to the grid, which is sounds reasonable, but actually, there are other ways to do it. Because if you think about it, if you do the math, there must be alternatives to build a solar farm, even bigger solar farm in Connecticut, not at the cost of farmland, not at the cost of a forest, not at the cost of a residence property value, not at the cost of damaging the landscape of Simsbury. You know, we have highway. We have a lot of open space that are just wasted. You do not use them anyway. You can make use of those things. And if you have a bigger magnitude, the cost will be lower, right? You will get more benefit. It's easy math for the company. I know the odds for us to win this battle is low unless officials here are on our side. I urge the board to represent us. Thank you.
My name is Laura Nygro. I live on Four Kilborn Farms Lane. I've lived in this town for a long time. We've raised our three children here, and I've said that before at the last meeting. I applaud your decision. Thank you for making yourself an intervening party at the Siting Council, and we need more. We need this body to also be a party that is going to stand in opposition. We have an absolutely uphill climb. And I've been looking at other Siting Council decisions, and they're walking in with letters from power companies applauding the efforts to bring green energy. And I'm echoing the cohorts that I see talking, and we're not against green energy. And again, I'll take you down my basement. I've got a 60,000 geothermal system sitting in my basement. I am all for green energy. What I am not for is trading green for green, and we're taking active farmland and we're removing it at a rapid, alarming pace. And it's not just Simsbury. Of these six RFPs that went out, there's 11 sites that are impacted, 11. Of those 11 sites, five of them are Connecticut. Of those five sites, so disproportionately, of those five sites, almost 100% of them are taking active farmland out of the marketplace, and this was not the beginning. This is not the beginning. This has been happening because they were small RFPs that had gone out and been requested. But we're all asleep. We're all asleep, and we're all siloed, and none of us are hearing each other, and we think we're in Simsbury, and we're the only ones that are feeling this. But you know what? I'm reaching out to these sister sites, and they're all standing there dazed and confused, a deer in the head like I am. May 11th, May 11th, somebody bonked me on the head. I've been asleep. I haven't been part of the challenge. I haven't been part of the solution. I am the first person to admit that I have not been part of the economic solution for this town, and I'm a capable person that can be. So I'm pledging that going forward, I will be part of the solution to solve whatever I can do to make sure that this town is viable. But the reasons that I'm here and the history lessons that I learned, because history is so important. And what I've learned from the old timers that have lived here forever is that we always have a budget crisis, and maybe it feels like this is the worst one ever. But 10 years ago, somebody felt it was the worst one ever, and 10 years before that, it was the worst one ever. And Simsbury has weathered that, and we have maintained our charm, and those are the reasons we raised our children here, and those are the reasons we're proud to live in Simsbury, and those are the reasons that we're going to fight. We need you by our side because we can't do it without you. We can't. This is big money. This is investment money. It goes deep. Them coming into our town from a resident, as I'm sitting at my kitchen table and contemplating, how can this be right? I called Governor Malloy. Governor Malloy, I applaud you. This is forward-thinking to try to understand how we can come up with renewable energy resources for our future. But did you really mean it to go and impact 15 residential neighborhoods weaving in and out of our community with a grammar school? Is that what you thought? Or were you thinking about brownfields? Were you thinking about these non-useful sites, gravel pits that can't be used to grow crops? Were you thinking about land that was out in the middle of somewhere that these solar fields would truly be no impact? Well, that's not what's happening. Investment companies are coming in. They're buying the farmland because we have no laws in place to prevent them from doing that. Two of these sites, our site and another sister site, it's Massachusetts and Mar-a-Lin that chose that project. They're reaching in. So from my kitchen table, a sister state is reaching in to my community. My town officials can do nothing, and I'm losing my community for them? I don't understand it. That makes no sense to me, that it sits inside my sleepy little town. That doesn't make sense to me. I'm all for contributing. I'm all for moving it forward, but we have to have a responsible plan. Maybe it's bigger than this council. Maybe it's bigger than Governor Malloy. Maybe this is a northeast quadrant power issue that has to be figured out, but you can't let these investment companies come in. They're using the farmland because it's clear-cut already. They cut down... They're going to deforest some more. It's southern-facing, and it's cheaper for them to do it. They need to be responsible. Like Massachusetts, there's a 10% tax that goes on the land if they use active farmland. We don't have anything like that. We have to figure out how to make it responsible. We can't let this go forward.
Thank you, Laura. Is there anyone else going in the back? I see they go, the green shirt in the back, and then come forward. You should know I'm actually very bad with colors, so I may say the wrong color.
It's Simsbury Green.
It's very green. You're good there.
So, I'm Liz Schlansky, and I live at 44 Berkshire Way. And I am one of the direct abutters. To the back of my property is Litchfield, so that's directly out my back, and there's a culvert between myself and Litchfield. And to my left is actually Colborough, or I guess now it's Griffin Land. Currently, and my neighbor is right next, right up front, we have probably about 300 yards of woods. So, those woods and, and I know, again, there's no clear-cut proposal that's about to be delivered shortly, but their plan was to leave a 30-foot buffer. I know that they're talking about increasing that buffer a little bit more, but they're taking out some very serious acreage and trees in an effort to put in solar fields. I'm kind of mixed. I actually am very supportive of green energy, very supportive of alternative thought. One of the reasons that I came to this town was actually, I really feel that there's a lot of responsibility, there's responsibility amongst citizens. I feel that everybody is responsible to each other, and that's one of the great things about this community, that people tend to look out for each other. I understand the process, that this was not something that the town had any say in. But now that it's here, I'm hoping, and I'm thrilled to hear that you are filing as a party, I'm not quite sure of the correct term, and I plan to do so as well as a direct abutter. But one of the things that's great about this town is that things have been done in a very thoughtful, well-planned manner. And this is really being dumped upon us, and there's not a lot of choice, aside from the Connecticut Siting Council. So, I would hope that, and I'm happy to hear that you've picked up your voice by requesting to be a party, and I hope that you'll continue to advocate for us in the north end of town. I think that there's good things and bad things, but I think hopefully, we can find middle ground and a balance, and whether that balance includes the installation or not the installation, but a thoughtful process is really what I'm looking for.
Thank you. In the back, I think I saw some, we'll go with the pink? Let me know when I get that wrong. It's dangerous to have me do colors.
Thank you for listening to us this evening. My name is Linda Lowe. I live at eight Kilborn Road. I am also one of the abutters to this massive utility-scale solar power plant that is proposed to be woven among our neighborhoods in the north end of Simsbury. First, I must state that I'm not against solar power. I'm for renewable energy to fulfill part of our overall energy needs. I'm an engineer who worked in the power industry for over 14 years, and so I was very interested to read the response to the RFP that was submitted by Deepwater Wind, the company that's chosen to build this project. Deepwater pointed out in their bid that they will petition the Connecticut Siting Council for a declaratory ruling, and they pointed out that a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need is not required for this project. This is true, I found out because of a Connecticut law that was adopted in 2005 where renewable energy projects less than 65 megawatt capacity need not obtain the certificate. Because of this, this Connecticut Siting Council is compelled to approve this project as long as it meets certain air and water quality standards. But the Connecticut Siting Council is not allowed to consider factors such as endangered species, historic or cultural sites, prime agricultural land, residential zoning, or other environmental impacts that it would normally consider when evaluating other energy projects, including cell towers or other power plants. I mean, I repeat, they're not allowed to consider these things. But as you, I'm sure most of you know, last Wednesday, Connecticut Senate and House passed a bill which, as of July 1st, it'll close this loophole for these solar power plants. Their citing will be subjected to the same scrutiny for environmental and other considerations like impacting farmland, residential zoning, forests, wildlife, that any other utility would be subjected to. And this law steers these massive solar projects away from farmland and residential neighborhoods like ours to landfills, brownfields, rooftops, and parking lots. How terrible it would be if this project, if this project was approved by the Siting Council and forced into our neighborhood because the application is submitted a day or two before this law takes effect in our state. So, like many of us here, it does not belong in our neighborhood. The Connecticut Senate, House, and many of our residents agree that this is not the right location. So, I'm asking you to please the town, stand in opposition to this proposed solar power plant, and be our voice and advocate against this project in front of the Siting Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're still going left to right. Joe. Blue.
There's three for three, boss.
I know, doesn't happen very often.
So far so good, though.
If you go back and look at past meetings, you'll understand my color confusion.
First of all, I wanted to, I'm Joe Tracy from 40 Berkshire Way. I live, two houses from Liz, one house from Steve. I'm not in a butter, but I'm very close. Let me, let me just say that I do support green energy. I think it is, it is the way to go in the long term. However, I don't think that the size of this project is appropriate for the town of Simsbury. It's really that simple. I want to thank you for having the meeting last week. I think you, we had probably 200 to 250 people there, and I appreciate you having your team there to explain things, the lawyers, the planners, the zoners, all those folks. And I really appreciate that because I think it alleviated a lot of concerns that people had, but we still have the concerns over the size of this project. It's just too big for the spot that they want to put it. And now that SB, or Senate Bill 943, which is an act concerning the installation of certain solar facilities on productive farmlands, has been passed, and as we've just said, it's effective 7-1, I would ask that the Board of Selectmen join with Senator Whitcos and Representative Hampton to, to ask the legislature to pause or to implement a moratorium on the development of farmland and forest, which this, this bill, this, this law addresses. And I'm talking about the end of Berkshire, Litchfield, and the intersection of Hotchkins and County. The law requires that the state have lots of other places to look before they come knocking on productive farmland, and I support what someone said, it is productive, and they're growing crops there today, different, all kinds of different crops. They should be looking at brownfields, industrial sites, state land, anywhere else that is non-productive, and not in the middle of a neighborhood such as this area. I would encourage your support, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. And for those who don't know, Joe is the one who actually requested the meeting last Wednesday, so I appreciate you suggesting that, it was a good suggestion.
I appreciate you implementing.
Yes. I'm not gonna guess.
I passed the tetrachromat test, I'm gonna like flaunt it.
Hello, Tom Nygro, four Kilborn Farms Lane. The RFP from Deepwater says the zoning laws of the town allow the public utility installation because of Article 7, subsection 3 of the town zoning, which is needed for public convenience and necessity. But it's not a convenience and necessity for Simsbury, it's for Massachusetts. It seems like that's what it is. Again, like a lot of other people, I'm not against solar. We have a geothermal system. I started, I was probably one of the first ones to start selling, helping people with utility, electric for green energy, discount on electric rate, if the more greener, greener electric. Me and a bunch of other people were selling, trying to get people to do a greener, I don't know what I'm trying to say.
It's okay.
Clean energy up, that's what it was. So, I was one of the first ones, me, Bob Kane, a bunch of other people. So, the character of the town, we do like. I had a funny thought today. I was, I was painting, and I was thinking, would people want to come to Simsbury to look at this solar, this 100,000 panels of solar for, to bring their family, like, let's go look at the solar panels. Instead of what we want them to come here for, I have a business in town, and I know we try to do, do things to get people in town, but the thought was funny to me that that might happen. People like, let's go take a ride, get an ice cream, and look at the solar panels. It's, it's a weird thought, but that's what will happen with this massive solar utility plant. So, just, we hope as a party you would be on our side and side with us with saying no to this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll go on left to right. We'll go to Susan.
Susan Messino, 41 Madison Lane. I hope that one of the outcomes of the proposal for the solar farm could be Connecticut starting to think about what are the best and less best options for green energy. I know they did close a loophole on farmland, but that's, I think, only part of the issue. We should have a differential incentive for where is the project going to be cited, and have a bigger incentive for projects that are gonna be onsite solutions like carports, buildings, roofs. And actually, I think the best green energy options are solar thermal and geothermal. Those things are very low-tech, they last forever, they're not relying on Chinese manufacturing and shipping things all over the world, they can be manufactured 100% in the United States, and these kinds of onsite solutions will make us less grid-dependent. And unfortunately, there's no big industry behind these things. It's primarily small businesses that install geothermal and solar thermal, not kind of big energy companies that are behind large wind installations and large solar farms. So, I think the best options have been left behind because of the lack of advocacy and lobbyists, frankly, at the Capitol. And I just wanted to clarify about the Grange proposal, that I believe your job tonight is just to forward it to the state, it's totally unrelated to the town budget.
Mr. Cashman, please.
So, I just, that's what my impression is, so I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? We're going from left to right.
I'm sorry to disappoint you, but I'm not talking about solar energy, I have my own little agenda. But, Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Tomorrow, Tuesday, June 13th, residents will be voting on the budget proposed by the town. I would urge everyone to vote no on all budget items. The town has a line item, operating transfers contingencies of $3,550,801 of unrestricted funds as a hedge fund against the state budget revenue. It is unacceptable to approve a budget with a contingency of over $3 million as a slush fund that can be allocated to any pie-in-the-sky expenditure without approval of the taxpayers. This is unacceptable. Voting down the budget will give the town time to figure out what the hell is going on in the state. Giving the town carte blanche on our taxpayer funds leads us to a slippery slope of unaccountability. A no vote would give the town time to reevaluate the expenditures aligned to the state budget. If the budget is voted down, last year's budget expenditures are used for taxes until the budget is approved, knowing what corrections are needed when the state has approved their budget and all expenditures and revenues are known. If the budget is approved, just forwarded to the referendum, then the supplemental taxes are just one-line item and no accountability. Vote no on Tuesday, June 13th, referendum vote. Vote no until we know the exact amount of expenditures for the 2017-18 budget. The Board of Finance at their May 24th meeting approved an addition of over $100,000 expenditures that were cut by the Board of Selectmen. With an uncertain fiscal climate and the state bleeding red in their budgets and revenues diminished now and in the future, the Board of Finance has failed to take their responsibilities seriously on the financial impact of adding expenditures to increase taxes. First Electman Lisa Heven has continually concerned about the decorum of speakers during public audience and the audience conversations during the Board of Selectmen meetings. However, during the May 24th Board of Finance meeting, First Electman Lisa Heven had a lengthy conversation with the Board of Selectmen members, Elaine Lang and Chris Kelly. Do these rules apply to First Electman Lisa Heven? I am concerned about the decorum of the finance director walking in front of the lectern while I was talking and showing files of public audience during the Board of Selectmen meeting after the May 24th Board of Finance meeting. He was distributing materials to the Board of Selectmen. His first electman, Lisa Heven, discussed the quorum at our staff. I am concerned that the Simsbury Performing Arts PAC is an organization that usurped their authority on the rules of access to town property. The PAC has continually, the PAC has continually sprayed, mosquito sprayed the Simsbury Meadows prior to concerts. The residue remains on the fields when children play on the playground, and the playground materials that children touch and place their fingers in their mouth, is, is it safe to continually spray the surrounding area before each event? There is a proliferation of signs at the entry to the Simsbury Meadows, which appears to be a violation of zoning regulations. The town is taking on a huge liability with the PAC selling beer and wine at concerts, having tailgating before concerts, allowing the use of marijuana, although it is illegal, and has now introduced camping and campfires on town property that is an alleged violation of the zoning regulations that Dave Ryan, excuse me, Dave Ryan, Chairman of the Zoning Commission and President of PAC, is instituting. Is this a conflict? There are allegations that the PAC is allowing private weddings on town property on September 29th with Milrite catering the affair. Has the PAC received a permit through the gathering process for these events? I recently received an event term sheet that is filled out for an application to use the PAC facility for an event. As you can see, the event fact sheet does not have any charges that an applicant could fill out. The checklist does not have any charges listed. It appears that each applicant has the ability to make a deal with Tom Vincent and Dave Ryan for the line items. Is this an appropriate business plan? I am concerned that Sloan Booster was fired as a seven-year reporter for the Valley Press. It is alleged that First Electman Lisa Heven made a phone call to the publisher of the newspaper with concerns that the story about the budget had some incorrect statements. This was corrected in the following issue. If reporters were fired for writing incorrect information, there would be very few reporters. It is imperative that we have a free press without any manipulation and threats from political operatives. Politicians should not influence reporting, and reporters should not shy away from making politicians accountable. There should not have been a rush to judgment in firing Sloan Booster. Thank you for listening. And all my comments, we posted on Simsbury PAC, Facebook News Feed, Simsbury Forum, and Twitter at Joan Coe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Going left to right. Mr. Cashman.
Point of clarification. Is this a public audience?
This is public audience.
Or is this, you're giving the courtesy to the people that are being infringed on with?
This is public audience. You may speak to any topic. Yes.
All right. Susan, I apologize, I thought it was a hearing for the people that had the panels. Well, my time starts now. I guess those that are last will be first, and those that are first... I guess those that are last will be first, and those that are first will be first. That's the good book. Getting back to this very important issue, the panels, and in the spirit of being forthright, I'm a candidate for First Electmen, for First Electmen in November 7th election. So you'll have an opportunity to express your dissatisfaction, because one of my opponents is sitting here today. Who the other will be remains, but maybe the first, the Assistant Democratic Chairman will tell us. Now, I attended a hearing backed by the zoning board relating to panels. These panels were to be put in Simsbury. And there was a proposal made, I think by Mr. Roy or by the town, and the proposal indicated that the panels would be set up at the town dump. And the airport came and objected strenuously. They said, we don't want it. It will reflect on the airplane approach, you'll blind the pilots. We don't want it. But they said, oh, this doesn't have anything to do with that. And they more or less, well, to be perfectly candid with you people, what you're up against here, this is an inside job. And the reason it's inside, it's already said at the state that they're not going to do anything, because they had an opportunity at that zoning meeting, because a lot of them sat in on that zoning meeting, and they voted for the panels at the dump. So they're talking, they're telling you one thing, but their record shows that they've done another thing in the past. They've supported panels. The truth of the matter is that they gave permission to this operation to put panels in at the dump. Now, to Dr. Rinaldi and those people that live on the mountain in the two and $3 million houses, right? The people that are saying, not in my backyard. Be careful, because that mountain is a great place to cut down all those trees and put those panels, and then you get that sun that comes in, you're going to generate a lot of electricity. You're going to blind a lot of pilots. So what I'm saying here is this. These people have to say no. You people have to stop saying, I'm for solar, but not in my backyard. Because as soon as any judge hears that you're for it, but you don't want it in your backyard, you're going to lose the case. You have to be against it. And you've been taken advantage of, and the zoning has taken advantage of you. I was at the hearing, I testified, Ms. Cole testified. There's minutes available, you can go and get the minutes. And I'm telling the truth, and they're not telling you the truth. They're not telling you the truth, because there's people that sat on this dais, they may be reading magazines now, that's how much they want to pay attention to what's being said here. But they came out and they supported it, and they voted for it. And the way you're going to stop this thing is don't believe what they're telling you. Let's get together, I'll give you 100 bucks to start, get an attorney, slap an injunction, and take them to court. Because you're not going to get, they're not going to be forthright with you. And as far as the representatives go, Whitco is a good senator, but I ran for state representative, and these issues were brought up, and nobody ever said, came right out and said, I'm against it. We're not going to let them put panels in Simsbury. Nobody came out. And like I say, taking it back, it's an inside job. Because if it wasn't an inside job, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be set up the way it is in the, in the siting council with Mr. Phelps. He's been around a long time. And the siting council can do what they want.
Thank you, Mr. Kalashman.
Thank you for allowing me the time to address.
Sure. And if anyone wants to speak further with me, I'm happy to speak with any of you at a different time. Yes, Mr., Dr. Rinaldi.
My name is Michael Rinaldi. I reside at 32 Pinnacle Mall Road. I don't live in a $2 million house, by the way. I have three comments. First comment involves the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Education. At the Board of Finance meetings and at the public audience on these budgets, you get the impression from the members of all these boards that somehow we deserve a increase in our mil rate, because we haven't had one for three or four years. And obviously, this brings up the idea that the budgets by both the Board of Finance and by the Board of Education have been appropriate. They've been in such a, conducted in such a manner that no increase in the mil rate should have occurred. Well, the fact of the matter is, over the past six, eight years, the Board of Finance budgets have been up over 5% because they took the money from roads and repairs, which is $2.5 million every two years. That's 5% every year, 1.25 million. And that reduced their budget to zero, or very little increase. Now, that's been grandfathered in over the past five or six years, and now their budgets are up 3%. So that's really a total of 8%. The Board of Education has had a 20% decrease in its enrollment over 10 years. That's 2% per year. 85% of the cost of education is personnel. They're trying to fill up those empty spots in the school system with choice students. I have nothing against choice students. But they come at $6,000 a pop, when we pay $16,500 a pop. That's $5 million over 13 years for 40 students. Because that's what they did, to put all their kindergarten in, not to bring it to the Board of Finance. The problem is, when you don't have an increase in your mil rate over the past three years, and your revenues go, don't go up, but your expenses go up, how do you get a zero mil rate? I'll tell you how. You take money out of reserves, and then you bond, you bond entities that should have gone into the budget, and then you also increase the correction rate applied to the budget from 98% to 99%. That's over a million bucks. That's how they did it. It wasn't because they were frugal over these past six, eight years. Okay? So pay attention when you go vote tomorrow. Number two, this board, I get to be politically correct, decided to give $80,000 to the Simsbury Quote Volunteer Ambulance Association. We're all for supporting that organization. I donate every year for the past 37, 40 years. However, they came to this board instead of going to the public for that money. This board presented it to Board of Finance, the Board of Finance was caught off-guard. They said, no way do we want to do this. But to be politically correct, somebody said, well, let's give them 50 grand. So they took 50 grand out of reserves and gave it to the Simsbury Ambulance Association. Now, the ambulance association, we're 30,000 short. Let's go to the public and get some donations. So they sent out a flyer to all of us. Please donate. Now, everybody who donates, and I'm not telling you not to donate. In fact, I applaud you. Donate to the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association. For every dollar, they get over $30,000. That should be reduced by the 50,000 we're giving them out of our reserves. That's number two. Number three, in order to be in form with the members of this meeting, Mr. Roy, he's the proponent of this operation, okay? He speaks for the solar system that's coming to Simsbury. He originally proposed about a year ago to put solar panels on the, the, near the airport, the.
Community farm?
No, it was on the.
Landfill?
Landfill. And somehow that was refused, as you heard in the discussion. But however, that farmland got put into the, into the mix, I have no idea. But that was presented to this board, and there's not one member on this board that spoke up against that operation. And now, all you people come here and you say, well, I didn't know anything about this. Well, this has been on the, on the menu for almost a year. Mr. Roy has brought those people in that company to a number of these meetings. And if you shake your head and you say no, it's on Simsbury Public TV. Those presentations were made to this board, and not one member said, that's not a good idea.
Dr. Rinaldi, it's been over five minutes. I'd be, if you want to schedule an appointment with Joey, and I'd be happy to meet with you later in the week.
I just want to clear up one last point here. So if you don't pay attention what these people do, you don't attend these meetings, you don't listen to Simsbury TV that produces the programs on these meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Rinaldi.
That when you come here and complain.
I appreciate your comments.
You're going to lose.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ah, Mr. Moore.
Attorney David Moore, ATM Bob White Way, Wheaton, Connecticut. I am a member of the Democratic Town Committee, as Mr. Kalashman pointed out. I'm actually the vice chair. I'm the vice chair of the Economic Development Commission for the town of Simsbury. I'm also a chair of the Simsbury Board of Ethics. I am not speaking on behalf of any of those organizations. I am speaking on my own individual accord. As to the budget, we are dealing with a situation where the state legislature has abrogated its responsibilities in coming up with a budget before the June 7th adjournment date. Guess what? Fun is, we get to have to figure out and guess what it is that we're going to have to set aside for our funds. I commend both the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Board of Finance and the Board of Education for doing as well as they have, and I would ask that our town please support the budget tomorrow. If the referendum fails, it will be highly problematic. As to the solar panels, it's going to be hard for the town to do anything. Why? Because the siting council is the main driving force, and the town cannot speak for or against the solar panels at this point in time, because no application has been put before the siting council. I would ask that the Board of Selectmen please consider that once the application is filed, that the Board of Selectmen please move for party status. Not to be an intervenor, but to be an actual party. That will enable the town to then sit at the table with the parties, the other parties, and discuss what would be appropriate as far as siting, et cetera. We would be one voice, however, against several. So we need to be realistic about what our expectations can be. But at least as a party, we would be able to have some say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public audience? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We move on to presentations. We have a presentation from Mr. Roy. I do just want to make a point out, the town has not taken a position on this. We haven't seen the application, and staff has not taken a position on this. Staff did not bring in deep water wind. Is that correct, Mr. Roy?
That would be accurate.
Okay.
Anyone want to say something about meat and potatoes?
So hopefully onto some good news. As you know, the town of Simsbury has a very collaborative partnership with the Simsbury Main Street Partnership, and we work very closely, not only with the First Electmen's office, but with the department heads. Several years ago, our businesses complained that there were parking issues. And while we tried to politely tell them that the only parking issue a business has is if you have too much parking, the town really wants to be very proactive in looking at how we can help our small businesses, and how we can continue to make downtown a vital destination. So I partnered with this man over here, Tom Roy. I should also thank a lot of the other department heads that were part of this project, including Jamie Rabbit, our town planner, Mike Glidden, our assistant town planner, Jeff Shea and Adam, both with Town Engineer. We've had the chief of police. We worked with all of the appropriate department heads. We embarked upon a parking study just from downtown. So again, the, you know, bank-to-bank, the charrette area, looking at what we could do to make that more efficient, safer, and better for all users, pedestrians, cyclists, automobiles, et cetera. And Tom introduced, actually, we've been working with Desmond, and we'll bring up India and Norm, but we've been working with Desmond on a prior grant request from the state of Connecticut, and they are parking experts, and I'll let Tom go in through their background. But I just want to say that what they're going to present has been vetted by our business communities. Through Main Street, we've reached out to the property owners, we've reached out to the businesses. Not only do they have public input in the beginning, we did walking tours of downtown, we met with the local community, and then we showed them the draft report before bringing it to the Board of Selectmen, to make sure that our consultants had heard right, that they had gotten the right information. And I'm pleased to say that we're well on our way, so.
As Sarah was saying, a big part of what we were looking to do is kind of confirm what we had heard for a number of years from the businesses, as to whether or not parking or lack of parking was creating an issue for our downtown businesses. On the town side, I think there was a strong level of support for saying, what can we do to hopefully facilitate making our businesses realize that the town is working for them? And give me just one second, we're going to get this squared away, and then we'll have yeah, HDMI? Is that HDMI right there? Nope, you just got to press HDMI. Okay, we got it. But we have with us here Norm Goldman and Andy Hill from Desmond Associates, and they're going to go through a brief presentation, and then we'll come back to talk about kind of some next steps and answer some questions.
So I do, even before you start, just thank Sarah and Main Street Partnership, who actually applied for the grant that enabled us to do this study. So thank you. Okay.
Tom, technical point, how do I advance this forward? Excellent, thank you. My name is Andy Hill. I am the Director of Consulting Services with Desmond. We're a parking consulting firm, nationally based. We have eight offices nationwide, about 100 staff. Parking is all we do. And I think that that's more than you want to hear and need to hear at this moment. Questions? I will not be speaking on solar at any point during this conversation. Our two-phase approach was essentially to come in and take a look at existing conditions, understand what future conditions were going to be, and then provide the town with some ideas on how to address their issues. Whenever we come into an engagement like this, we're really looking at potential issues from two perspectives. One of them is the classic qualitative or quantitative perspective, which is just, there's not enough parking to go around. The other question tends to be less defined, but more common, and that is the quantitative issue. There's parking, but it may not be in the right places. It may not be accessible. It may not be recognizable. And that is often what you see in communities here. It is a rare thing to come in and find a community. It is a rare thing to come in and find a community that simply doesn't have enough parking spaces. It's a fairly common one to come into community and find that they have parking, but it is not positioned in a way where it's really serving the constituency to its fullest amount. We started out with the study area, which was described. We had broken this into, I believe, 18 or 19 sub-areas. We initially started with blocks. And the issue that we ran into with blocks is some of your blocks are exceptionally long, and when we talk about analyzing things, we want to analyze them within the boundaries of acceptable walking distance. Now, that's a fairly fluid definition here. There's not a universal definition for acceptable walking distance. In downtown Boston, where I work, acceptable walking distance can get stretched into a quarter mile, depending on how congested things are and whether you feel like paying $42 or $20 to park for the day. In a community like Simsbury, you're working on a much closer scale here. The expectation is that you should be able to park fairly close to your destination. There's not necessarily a pricing component associated with parking. And folks who are coming to downtown Simsbury do not expect to have to walk a quarter mile to, to anything unless it's a particularly nice day and they feel so inclined. So we had set our radius at a maximum of a 400-foot distance. This is generally considered within the industry to be sort of a Level of Service A acceptable walking distance here. The red concentric circles that you see out there were an exercise where we looked from the center of each block out and said, "What's the distance? What is the maximum distance that 400 feet will take us across the breadth of that circle?" Which led to these additional subdivisions in the areas here. Now, across this area, you've got a tick less than about 3,400 parking spaces. A little bit less than 1,300 of those, about 37% is public parking. The largest reservoirs of public parking within this area are the state-owned Iron Horse Lots. There's a significant amount of parking around the Performing Arts Center, and then some small clusters of public parking, Eaglewood up here by the library, and some other spots. No surprise, the majority of parking across the area is, is private parking. It's a little bit over 2,100 parking spaces, about 63% of the supply. And we subdivided this up according to posted and understood user groups here to break it into parking that's set aside for office uses, for retail, for hotel, residential, and then other, which is sort of the ubiquitous, "This is private parking, don't park here," but it's not necessarily designated as a particular user group. When we took a look at occupancy initially relative to the supply, the three bars that you see across the top, the green bar is the total public supply, the red bar is the total private supply, the blue bar at the very top is the total supply. We came out and looked at conditions on three different occasions. We came out in early December of 2015 because we really wanted to capture conditions right around the Christmas shopping season, and we had got in Thursday, two weeks before Christmas, and the Saturday, two weeks before Christmas, which according to the International Council of Shopping Centers and ULI is certainly within the heart of that. If you're really looking for the busiest day of the busiest year, your best bet is to go the Saturday, to any type of retail environment, the Saturday before Christmas, and that's guaranteed to send you running for the hills if you've ever gone into any type of mall or shopping center. But this, we felt, was a pretty close measure. The other set of observations we did want to do and we did execute was a set of observations during an event over at the Meadows as well, because we wanted to see that. I'll talk first to what we saw under these conditions and then under the Meadows here. And under these conditions, we did see, we did see healthy utilization across the area. We did not see anything that necessarily exceeded the amount of supply that you've got in the area. There were pockets from time to time, and you went into individual facilities, you could go onto individual sub-areas, and you would find places where things would get fairly tight an hour or two each day. And we look very closely at those conditions when they're presented to us because it's not unusual at all in an urban environment or municipal environment to find that you're going to have one block, one facility, one particular area that's very highly utilized. That's not necessarily an indication that you're looking at a quantitative parking issue or shortfall. Where you are looking at shortfall is if you have several of those contiguous blocks that are underutilized, or that there is supply on those contiguous blocks that's just not available to the folks who really need it. That's when you start looking and saying, "Yeah, we just don't have enough parking spaces to go around." It's kind of why we do that sub-area segmentation when we start doing the analysis as well. Getting back to my original point, you did see some hotspots, if you will, but for the most part, they were fairly isolated. They didn't occur consistently throughout the course of the day. It was, you know, here at this location, an hour there at that location. They were fairly transitory, and they weren't necessarily something we looked at and said, "Okay, we need to build or design against this." This is an issue that requires management, but it doesn't necessarily require the expenditure of money for infrastructure.
You should say that one again.
Yeah, can you say that again?
Yeah. I wanna, I wanna hear that one again.
So, again, and we'll kind of touch this when we go out, the last thing we want to do is tell you to spend money to solve a problem that you may be able to solve through management techniques here. Parking's very expensive.
So probably the last thing you want to hear.
Fixing your parking problem by spending public dollars is going to be very costly. It's $5,000 for space for surface parking. Structure parking will run you around $25,000 to $30,000 for space, and you don't want any, even get started on going underground. I've seen projects that go over $200,000 for space when you start breaking the surface and going underground. So if we can find a way to do more with what you've got right now, that's a better solution for your problems all the way around. Saturday, again, fairly brisk business across the area. We had some pockets of, of high utilization, a lot of competition for space, especially at the shopping center across the way here, but at no point did we see that cluster of two or three, four blocks all next to each other that were running at very high levels of utilization, where you could look at this and say, "Somebody coming into town just to go shopping for that day is gonna take a look at this and come away with a negative experience, go home and say, 'Don't go to Simsbury.'" There was parking available, both in public and private assets, usually on the adjacent block if they couldn't find it right there where they were going. Special events is a whole different animal. With special events, you're usually leaning very heavy on the management side because unless you have a lot of money to spend, it's very hard to build parking to support a special event, especially with something like the Meadows. Understanding is that attendance there can flex from as little as 1,000 to up to 10,000. Our best estimation from the fieldwork that we did is that the typical ratio for attendance when folks come to events there is about 2.5 persons per vehicle. That, of course, is gonna fluctuate according to the type of event as well. So conservatively, let's say it's two people per vehicle. 10,000-person event, that's 5,000 parking spaces that you would have to manufacture if you're gonna try and actually build to accommodate that need, and you may only need that one time a year for that particular event. So when we look at something like this, typically what we like to look at is, what's the median? Do we have enough parking in the immediate area to support that median need? And then are there assets available for those larger events? The management at the Performing Arts Center has done a pretty good job of putting together a set of materials to make folks aware of, of what's available to them. They have agreements in place to shuttle folks into off-site parking when that's necessary here. There are some events that we understand that do overwhelm what they have available to us. Our best estimation is, at any given time, both with what they have on site, the use of the Iron Horse Lots adjacent to them, some of the on-street parking in the area, and then some of the satellite options they've got as well, they can muster in pretty short order up to about 2,500 to 3,000 spaces, which should cover their needs for about 90% of their typical event catalog here. There are a couple of events, I believe there's a marathon is, is one of them, or a race that seems to bring in a significant number of people here, and they don't necessarily have the assets in place right now to pull out of, on short notice and put in place, but my, our understanding is they do do a very good job of reaching out to folks and creating that capacity as they need it and making folks aware of their, their options when they come into town. A couple of recommendations we did come away from, from watching this event. This event was the Ray Charles retrospective that happened last July. For those of you who, who had tickets, if you remember, it was supposed to go off Friday night, and we had massive thunderstorms come through, so it went off Saturday night as well. Interesting observations that we came away from that. The event staff does a pretty good job of coordination. They could do a better job with some radios here. Most of the conversation that they seem to be having was Irish intercom from one end of the parking lot to the other. They could benefit from some better communication up front here. They have some fairly rudimentary materials out there to make folks aware of what their options are. That could be augmented. Within the report, we actually gave an example of the town of Plymouth, Massachusetts, that does a really bang-up job with some of their materials here in getting the, the word out to folks not only where you can go to park, but what the operating hours are, if there are costs associated with that, and where those locations are relative to some popular destinations in the area. And that's, that's kind of the standard we'd like to appeal to. I'm running on air.
No, that's okay. I just laughed when you said, "Popular destinations." I know if that translated to drinking establishments.
Yeah, or the beach. We, one of the other things that we take a look at whenever we come into it is, is like the stay and turnover. That's also a good measure to find out if you've got issues here. And, and we really wanted to focus in on, on three locations when we were out here during the Christmas season. We had a lot of folks who said that the Iron Horse Lots were really commonly considered sort of the reservoir, not only for commuters, but also for employees as they came into town, and they also might be a viable option for folks who came in on shorter terms, diners, shoppers, that type of thing. And we wanted to take a measure for what we, if you want to take a measure of that activity to see who is actually using those, or at least get a measure for how long they're staying and turning over so we could come back and be able to report, "This is who we think we're, we're using those." The area that we looked at was the southernmost Iron Horse Lot. There's really three here. There's one just behind the Plan B Burgers. You go across the street, there's another one that's down from Fiddler's Green, and then there's another one that extends further south, almost always the way down to Drakehill Road. The area that we were looking at was the very north end of that southernmost lot because there was a large concentration of vehicles there, and we had seen people coming out there and walking up the street. So we wanted to see how long those folks were actually staying. License plate inventories are tedious. You're basically going out and you're recording the plate numbers of every vehicle that's parked in the lot every hour for an eight to 10-hour period, then going back and comparing those spreadsheets to figure out who was there all day long, who was there for one hour, two hours, three hours. So in that particular lot, we had, we had 17 vehicles parked for a total inventory of 54 spaces, so not heavily utilized. Typical length of stay was about five and a half hours that day, and you actually didn't have any real turnover. We had folks that came in, parked, and left, and nobody came in to replace them. So our assumption is you were looking primarily at a commuter population and maybe a handful of employees, but there was no transit activity that was happening down there at that point. However, the Simsbury Town Shops at the same time...
Boy, that first part ran longer than you thought.
I told you, you gotta catch me if I get going here.
I thought I was.
We were running out of gas. So, yeah, Simsbury. So I'll be doing the rest of this El Vente. Simsbury Town Shops, your typical length of stay was...
Off topic heading.
Little bit less than an hour and a half, and spaces in the Simsbury Town Shop turned over about three times a day. So that is very typical of a shopping center, high level of traffic, high level of turnover, very healthy parking environment if you are running a retail center. Is it gonna come back up?
Yep.
And we'll see how long I did here.
Yeah.
Pretty good, so, or Tom?
I know. Antoni, funny guy.
You, you can get away with me. But look at that, 3.5 and 1.7 hours per vehicle.
There you go.
We also looked at on-street parking because this was kind of a curious thing to us. We, we saw the practice of on-street parking quite a bit throughout the year. We didn't necessarily see the ratification for on-street parking happening within the area. The assumption was, being outsiders, it must be something that's allowed, but there wasn't a lot of signage that supported this allowance here or endorsed it. So we, we watched really 46 spaces enter on the intersection of Wilcox and Hop Meadow there, which seemed to be sort of a center for this activity there up by Fiddler's Green, across from the, the graveyard and... And you had 27 vehicles go through that area during the course of observations. Typical length of stay was about two and a quarter hours per vehicle, and again, you never saw a lot of intensive use. The spaces didn't turn over multiple times during the day. It looked like a lot of your activity came in right around lunch or dinnertime and then went out. You didn't have multiple turns, but a healthy level of activity within that area. I want to come back to the on-street thing because that was, that was one of the things that we sort of came away with as an observation here. So that's kind of the quantitative measure of things. From a qualitative standpoint, there's, there's some room for improvement and some things that could be done differently or better. One of the advantages that we have, and it doesn't sound like an advantage, but we came in from the outside. We're not familiar with the area, and very often, when you are familiar with an area, you have an idea for what the allowed rules and regulations are. Coming from the outside, we're looking at it from somebody who's coming from an adjacent community, maybe for the first time, and so some things jumped out to us. One of the things that jumped out to us was wayfunk. Everybody in town kind of knew where they could park and what the available assets were. For somebody who's coming from out of town and they're driving in, they're gonna do the same thing that almost all of us do in the modern age, which is they're gonna plug in the address of wherever they want to go into their phone, they're gonna drive to that location, and then they're gonna start circling around and looking for parking. Curbside parking is the most popular parking for that particular reason, because folks, especially if they're unfamiliar with the area, want to pull up outside of their location, identify that, and then find parking as quickly as possible, usually within line of sight, so that they know where they left their car, they can see where they're going, they're gonna be able to come right back again. They will go outside that line of sight, they will have some comfort for going to other places if there's a really strong signage program to support that. You're a great community, you have some wonderful assets, you do not have a really strong signage program to support that. So something like this, where we pull up on Hop Meadow, there's that lane on either side that's set aside, and it's a question whether this is a bypass lane or whether this is a parking lane, it's not really clear. There's a sign that it says "Two-hour parking" that's allowed at this location. I think that's one or two that might be along Hop Meadow, there's one on the other side. And then there's not a lot of signs out there that are saying, "No parking either." We did, we were provided drawings from DOT, which I had a planner spend quite a bit of time going over to figure out where you could and could not park, and when DOT comes and puts those signs up, this will be much clearer, but right now, it's kind of a murky issue. To give you an idea of, of what's left on the table, our best estimate is you have about 102 curbside parking spaces across your downtown right now. There are potentially another 118 along Hop Meadow. The, the dimensions are there, if it were allowable, but state regulations indicate that that's not allowable, and so that capacity exists only from a dimensional standpoint, not from a ratified or legal standpoint.
Are you saying there's no parking along Hop Meadow?
No, I'm saying that you could have quite a bit of ratified parking along Hop Meadow if the state were to agree to allow those lanes that are on either side...
Oh, I see.
...into use. We initially came out and looked at those, and because we did note, "Man, there's a ton of curbside parking, and nobody seems to be using it here," and had to go back to...
That isn't intended to be parking area, it's just a matter of, we need to, I think this is a great reason to reinvigorate that push to get the appropriate signage up, and the stated signage to get, get it replaced.
This is, this is another example where we really would like to put in some signage. This is the parking lot for the public library here. This is the parking lot for the public library here. I'd love to see a tastefully done Big Blue P there that folks could look at and know that this is available public parking, because if I'm not familiar with the area, I have no idea whether I can park here or not, what the rules are, how long I'm allowed to stay, and it's a little bit of a head-scratcher. It's not necessarily the most welcoming environment you'd like to put forth to your first-time visitor coming into town. You have a ton of private assets across the area that are very underutilized and very often next to places where people really want to be. It's not uncommon at all. Folks pay to maintain those assets, they want those assets available to their employees or customers when they arrive, but they may only need those for six or eight hours during the course of the day, and then you have a lot of concrete that's sitting there empty and unoccupied that could be used, put into use for secondary use here, if there was some sort of structure in place. One of the structures I want to talk to you a little bit tonight before I wrap up is shared use agreements, and these are a way to put those into play or put those into use in a way that makes those available to folks who need to have access to them, but protects the rights and the concerns of the primary property while at the same time. You have some challenging pedestrian transitions here. This is taken from about the middle of the center and southern iron horse lots going up Wilcox to Hot Meadow, which is kind of a locus of activity. That's 4,600 feet linear at a 3% to 5% grade, which is a substantial grade here. Not only is there a significant grade distance and a significant grade change, but one of the things you will notice on either side of the roadway here are any types of benches, any types of cover, anything along those lines here. So for somebody who has any type of mandatory challenge, this looks like a significant challenge to go through, and it makes that public asset that has all available capacity to you, in essence, inaccessible to these folks, because they're looking at that distance and saying, "I'd rather go around the block two or three times and wait for a curbside spot to open up than have to walk this kind of distance." So one of the challenges that we immediately identified is what can we do with something like this to make this less daunting, more accessible, and make those parking spaces a little bit more available psychologically and practically to folks. And we talked a little bit about this before. Just the definition of parking spaces. We saw parking occurring in this area on the curbside here. All of those white lines there are white lines that we've added in and that the town will be laying down in short order here, but when we came through initially, those weren't there, and so it was guesswork. Where does allowable parking start and stop? Is this truly allowable, or are these folks just savvy enough to know when the police department is coming around?
They come around? Do we write parking tickets?
As you pull out without lines, how much room do you give yourself to pull out? Usually you'll leave a little bit of extra cover, which now you end up with all of these spots which are too small for people to parallel park into. So you end up, something like this will pick up an extra two spots maybe. Small, but it adds up.
In terms of future demand, you have a tremendous amount of activity happening here, but most of it seems to be happening outside of the study area. The only two developments we saw that actually looked like they would be coming within the study area are the Gerard Development and the rehab of the Eno Mansion down here, Ensign House? 690, thank you. Yeah, there's like nine names for every town here. Both of them appear from the plans that we saw to have plenty of parking contained within the site itself, so when we looked at these, we acknowledged them, but we didn't necessarily look at these as an impact event across the area, because it looked like they were going to be able to contain their own demand. We did run analysis looking at our best estimation for vacant space that you have in the area, assuming that that was completely occupied at some point in the future, and that was running at 100% occupancy, and that did change the timber of things slightly here. For example, in the weekday that we went out and did observations, the busiest utilization we saw net across the area is about 30% of capacity. When we look over the horizon, you picked up another 7% in terms of utilization capacity here. So you are busier, you are healthier, you still have some of those pockets, but again, because you can see from the red numbers up there, they're occurring in different places and at different times. The only place that we actually saw where there was a significant cluster was at the far south end of the study area here at about 2:00 in the afternoon. And again, if you look at it, it's a one-hour transitional period, and then that's kind of come and gone. So something you want to look at managing your way through, but not necessarily building up against. So wayfinding. There are really four components to wayfinding. There are trailblazing signs. These are what you see at major intersections that say, "Hey, turn this way for parking, go this way for the library, the meadows are down here, Fiddler's Green is up there." Identifying signage are those blue Ps that you see, that tell folks, "Hey, this is a parking facility, you can pull in here, this is available to general public." Once you get in there, often you'll see instructional signage in the facility or right at the entrance that says, "This is available for up to three hours," and it's open from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, something along those lines. And then the last piece that's really important is the directional signage, and this is often outside of the parking facility. It is that kiosk that folks like to walk up to and take a look at and say, "Okay, we're parked here, we're going to go up here for lunch, and then we're going to go over here to the Eno Hall to hear this lecture over here, and this is how we can get up to these and then get back to our car at the same time." We included some examples of signage that are not necessarily examples that are germane to Simsbury, that's very unique. You'd want to work with a graphic consultant and your own boards to make sure that what you put in place is really reflective of your community, but they were examples of stuff that we'd seen in other places that we thought was done very well. It's funny where you find some of the gems here. Nobody ever thinks of Battle Creek, Michigan as the heart of really good signage, but they actually did a bang-up job.
There you go.
Ditto with Danville, California, and actually Fredericksburg, Maryland, which is one of the ones we looked at, we thought was most comparable to you folks here. Bastrop, Texas, not comparable to you folks as well, but they do a nice job. So shared parking agreements. Really good shared parking agreements are basically a contract that exists between two parties that says, "Party A, who owns the property, agrees to let Party B use the property X number of spaces under these conditions or terms." Common conditions and terms usually are not only defining the capacity, the hours that they can use those, but division of labor when it comes to maintenance. There's usually indemnification and liability clauses there as well. If there need to be lighting upgrades, if there's any type of sharing of revenue, these things often get folded as well. Within the report, there's actually a fairly healthy set of sample documents you folks to look at to see how these are constructed. They're not that complicated, but they are a great tool to make folks comfortable with this idea of sharing. The fact is, you have sharing happening in the community already. Anybody who goes to McFadden's, this is great?
Parks over in the bank.
I think it's always that's the simplest and easiest answer, which is, you know, the majority of their business is happening when the bank is closed, so 364 days a year is not an issue, but all of a sudden, when it's March Madness, and all of a sudden on a Thursday, everybody at McFadden's is going to have to go to the bank, it's going to be an issue to the bank. Wouldn't it be great if the manager of the bank has one number to call over at McFadden's to say, "You need to take care of this for me," and it's solved? And they also...so that's the easy part, and forget about all the other great things about legal protection. It just makes it simpler for both parties. It's not big government, it's two people having a relationship, and we're just working with Main Street about saying, "Here's a template that two businesses can use to work better together."
Obviously, the example on the right is bad.
The anger management?
I'm pretty sure that was taken just outside my office in Boston. We call that Thursday.
It's thoroughly possible.
There are a number of things you can do in terms of environmental improvements as well, and a lot of this was actually highlighted in the charrette that you folks participated in not too long ago. In fact, the picture that I included in the upper right was taken directly from that document. There's some great ideas there to begin with in terms of bumpouts, which is something that you would really want so that you could improve connections across Hot Meadow. Hot Meadow's a very wide street, it's very quickly traveled. That is one of the things that narrows it and would make that a little less daunting for folks to cross over. Getting a little bit even further out from that, in the lower left, you see a speed table. These are commonly used in the Cambridge area, if you ever want to actually see these in play in Somerville, Massachusetts.
There's a number in Hartford at this point?
They are a great traffic calming device. Again, they also would be terrific for out on Hot Meadow. The one thing that we were reminded of, and I need to make abundantly clear to this body here, is anything you do out on Hot Meadow is a state highway that involves talking to the DOT, so there would probably have to be some sort of compensation, agreement, surrender, something involved in talking with those folks if you're going to change that structure at all.
All right, we've got a lot of information there. I'm sure you have questions?
Just a couple of things, so just to wrap up. Parking is not sexy, but I think, I hope you can understand why we've really chosen to focus on this. There's a lot of value to, you know, we're not looking at $5,000 to $200,000 fixes. We're actually looking at fairly simple fixes, but just like, you know, you guys believe in government, we want to communicate to our residents, we want to communicate very clearly to our visitors. It provides safety measures, okay? So, you know, there's, I caught several people driving down the parking lane, the parking lane right in front of the Free Library, for example, that didn't know, and you have two sets of cars moving, sometimes with the police that have to pull them over. So, you know, there's a lot of safety issues, and again, being the town, we want to communicate as clearly as possible to our residents and our visitors. So I think it was really important that, you know, this document will be used by the planning department, you know, there's some next steps which the town will go over, but really that this begins to make it clean, efficient, effective, and safe for the community, and as we continue to look at things like the PAC and some of these other issues, it was really important to do this proactively.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for your efforts, and we appreciate the information. It actually is very fascinating. It's a little late in the evening, but it is, and you're going to put this report online so that members of the public can take a look.
Can we have a copy of it?
And Mr. Roy will provide copies to the members of the Board of Selectmen. Do you have those tonight?
I got a couple, I got three, but...
You could just email it if that's...
You can pick your emails, Tom.
I would never...
Oh, wait, I'll do it. And I will open it up to questions from members of the board at this point. Mike?
I found this really interesting, especially having traveled through the years through town and seeing the gaps or the plugs that occur, and yes, I'm one of those people that parked over at the Bank of America, only after hours, but I can see why it does work that way. You know, you can park there, you can get in and out fairly easily, so it's good, and I think this is a good starting point for us.
Thank you, Cheryl.
As far as changes to Hot Meadow, and I just don't know the answer to this question, is improving signage something that the DOT would be inclined to do, or...
I believe so. We've had some conversations, and the police chief, as our legal traffic authority, has been in communication with them. I think it's one of those things that every now and then we just need to give a little reminder and check on the progress of that. And it may be that we can even, if they can't get to it soon enough, it may be something that we offer that we would do it with their permission, but the cost of the signs is relatively small considering the impact it will have.
Well, and it's really great that you pointed out the confusion that exists in several spots along Hot Meadow. I appreciate your perspective, coming into town and saying, "Hey, you know, where can you park?"
Yeah, and if I can follow on what Cheryl was saying, so is, for example, the Blue P parking here, especially, I don't know about the library, because sometimes they tend to get packed, but iron horse is really underutilized, is that, that is, always goes through the state? I know we have some wayfaring signs that we've put up as a town on kind of adjacent to state highways that have been useful.
Once we get off Route 10, we're allowed to do whatever we want to do.
Okay, okay, because I, and I do notice, just, I'm...
I don't park at that many.
I'm barely, I'm barely ever at McFadden's, ever. But I do notice on, I'm someone who parks on Hot Meadow and walks while I do my errands, and I do notice many spots have "don't park here during these hours," and these and these on these days, which doesn't really play out to the naked eye, so, but that all goes through the state, huh?
It was shocking to me. I never thought that anybody would question that you could park an iron horse. But as an outsider, where does it say that this is...
Well, I just know in front of the Historical Society, there are five signs all conflicting with each other as to when you can park there and when you cannot.
Sean?
So I park in the middle of the drive-through at the bank, in full disclosure, but... Whatever works. What is the process to, you mentioned those spaces on Hot Meadow that are the size of space but not necessarily allowable at this point. Is it a relatively easy process to go through that, to get those converted from a state standpoint, or how do we go about that?
I think the approval is there. We are already allowed to park there. That was an issue that was pushed many years ago as part of the process, and Hyrum PAC worked closely with the state so that when they repaved that, they restripped it. It was essentially a traffic calming measure, which was to say that the lane is an 11-foot lane rather than a 12-foot lane, but we need to now go the next step and get the signage appropriate to that area so that, again, people will be very clear that you can park there.
It's going to be a petition to the state. We already have had, even prior to the parking meeting, myself, Hyrum, the chief, we met in his office, and I definitely think it was Rich Switzke, to talk about cleaning up some of the signage on Hot Meadow Street, you know, working with the town to make sure that we could start to remove all the extraneous signage, to put back the signs that really need to be, to clarify, because there was just, there was junk.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that would make a lot of sense in terms of the good citizenship between businesses. The library is full, people go over to Fitzgerald to park, and then if we could provide them an opportunity safely on Route 10 to do that right there, you know, you get a far better option without interrupting another business, you know, so that seems like a no-brainer. Everybody thinks that that's the passing lane when somebody's taking a left, so.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for all your efforts, and Cheryl for getting the funding to be able to do this. Very much appreciated.
Thank you to Main Street for that.
All right. What I'm going to do is request that we amend the agenda so John can go home and do his homework. So we are going to amend the agenda right now.
I will sum up.
To put John first, may I have a second?
All in favor, please say aye. John, can you come on up and let's get you out of here? John comes before the board with a proposal to renovate the outdoor basketball court at Town Forest Park to fulfill the requirements for him to receive his Eagle Scout rank. The project will be contingent upon review and approval of the Culture Parks and Rec Commission at their June meeting, and then the other land use approvals. John, in the back, you see Mike Glidden, he can help you with the land use approvals. See him over there? He'll help you with that. All right, and why don't you tell us what your project's about? Thank you for coming here, and thank you for leading us in the pledge.
My name is John Cody. I'm a life scout in Troop 76 for that, the First Church, and I'm working towards Eagle Scout. I propose to refurbish the basketball courts at Town Forest Park. Right now, they're virtually like unusable.
Thank you. I can pass those down. Okay, keep those.
But at Town Forest, I moved here from Houston, Texas around four years ago, and we love taking our dog up to Town Forest Park and revitalizing those spaces there, and I know they're doing a lot of work. They just got rid of the pavilion that was somewhat rotted, and they're going to be getting rid of the shed that the YMCA used to have there. But the YMCA also had the basketball courts, and it's really just not a pleasant sight when entering the park. As you can see on like the second page, the basketball courts are like broken, the hoops are, hydraulics on the back of the hoops are like bent and just not working, and they're all rusted. In addition, there's vandalism, like the spray paint on the actual backboards, and the netting is torn. So I would be revitalizing this stuff and fixing the hydraulics, making them more permanent so they can't be obstructed again. And then... And then sanding and getting all the rust off of the basketball hoops and repainting On the next page with the, there's minor cracks and just breaks in the asphalt. It's a fairly decent blacktop, it just needs to be filled and resealed. And there is just a paint spot which will be covered up in the new ceiling. So I will be resealing that blacktop. In addition, I was talking to the Parks Department in Orlando there. He told me that they could get rid of the PVC, there's like a embedded PVC piping that the YMCA had for, I think it was a volleyball court, I'm not really pretty sure, I'm not really that sure what it was. But he said he would be able to get that out and repatch that. And then I'll be pushing back the brush on the edge of the basketball, on the edge of the basketball court to make it more open. Finally, there's a decent amount of just litter around the area. I know that they've been picking stuff up when they've been working in this area around Town Forest Park, but I'll definitely make an effort to clean up the surrounding area, make it look much nicer. This new core with new paint, fresh black ceiling, sealant on the court, and just new painted basketball hoops would just make it look much better, more inviting for this town park that they're really trying to just build up. I was also talking with Mr. Toner, and he told me that this was not in, like, the town's budget, which makes it perfect since this project won't be, any cost to the town will all be donated, and, like, funding will be done by me. And that is it.
So this is a great project, particularly because we are going to be doing some work around that area this summer as well on the parking area and the new entrance at the Walker Woods. So this is a great complement to that. And I want to thank you for bringing this forward to us and really making our community better. We're very proud of you and very proud of this project.
Thank you.
Opening up to questions from members of the board?
Get her done. Yeah.
All right, so let's get you home. May I have a motion? May I have a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project proposed by John Cody to renovate the outdoor basketball court at Town Forest Park, contingent upon approvals by Culture Parks and Rec and any other land use boards as needed.
So moved.
I will go with Sean and then Cheryl for the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Go home and study, John.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Could I have a signature?
Sure.
I think I get a signature here on the bottom.
You're the smartest one in the room to get a bunch of politicians to sign it.
And he waited until we were tired and we were all thrown out. Really well played.
So what am I signing?
Lisa just got hustled by an Eagle Scout.
I don't know if it's you or Jerry that signed it.
It's probably Jerry.
I think it's Jerry.
We don't typically sign it.
It's kind of exciting. I've never been asked to do that, but I'm pretty sure Jerry Toner will sign that.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to go ahead and delay my first selectwoman's report until the end because we have a number of things to get through, and that way people don't want to...
Sean is so upset!
I didn't say I'm not doing it. I'm just saying, waiting to the end. We have before us a motion to approve the Simsbury-Grange proposals for benefits of the Neighborhood Assistance Act, and for that, I will turn the chair over to Chris because once again I am recused.
Yep. So the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services provides grants for civic organizations under what's called the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program. These grants are a minimum of $250, up to a maximum of $150,000. As we know, the Grange has submitted two, created two proposals. One is $22,000 to assist with training and education, and the second is $14,000 for energy conservation. The process with these proposals is that they are developed by the organization, submitted to the town. We are required to have a public hearing, which we had this evening, and as Susan points out, we are not approving these tonight, but we are approving moving these to the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services. So with that as a background, what I'll ask for is a motion to approve forwarding to the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services the two Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposals from the Grange, and that's all I need.
So moved.
Second.
Just a question.
Yep.
There's no, there's no local funds needed for this, correct?
There is not.
And I, just another clarification, this program is not, even though Lisa has recused herself because she is a member of the Grange, but participation in this job training program and such is not limited to members of the Grange. It is open to the community as a whole. Yes.
That's great.
Right. I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify so that that was, that was clear. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
I only had one question, and that was with regard to the food program that you discussed. And I know I really liked your idea about the special diet for kids who are suffering from certain illnesses and conditions, but my question is, are you going to expand that at all if you receive your grant? Into other, yeah, I mean, is it going to be specifically restricted to epilepsy, or is there going to be other?
Anyone who uses it.
Okay.
I think that's just an initial population that are officially prescribed the diet, and it would be a way for me to do outreach to the medical community with people that I already know, but it's open absolutely to anyone.
I think it's great to encourage, you know, the local production of food and the diet that goes along with that, you know, is very beneficial, so I think that's great.
Any further comments? All who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, say nay. So carries. Thank you. Lisa?
Come back! Sorry, it was a very interesting discussion up there.
You weren't reading your report, were you?
I was not.
Okay.
I went with our Eagle Scout, actually about his experience participating in local government, which is just great, and we're so glad to be here.
It is great.
Don't forget, we've amended the agenda.
We haven't, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've done the Grange. So we'll move on to the next item, which is to authorize the first selectman to seek party status before the Connecticut Siting Council for the Tobacco Valley Solar Proposal. This is a request to seek party status as opposed to intervenor status. I did want to make a note before we even begin this to let you know that Representative Hampton and Senator Wickes will be setting up a public meeting with representatives from the Siting Council, and we have requested that they also invite someone from the state who can speak to health issues that people may have questions about, and they have agreed to try and get someone from the state who can speak to that. Once we get confirmation of when that is taking place, we will let you know. But that's a great opportunity to ask people at the Siting Council, what can they consider? We've been told that they can consider more than what was said here, but there, we'll let them speak for themselves as to what issues can be considered. And we're going through this as well. So before the board is a request to authorize the first selectwoman, that would be me, to submit an application to be designated as a party pursuant to Section 16-50J-14 of the Regulations of Connecticut State Agencies in the event that Deepwater Wind submits a petition for declaratory ruling to the Connecticut Siting Council in connection with the Tobacco Valley Solar Proposal. I think it is really important for members of the public to understand that there is no application right now with which to evaluate. So we are looking forward, we have concept plans, they've reached out to residents and asked for their input, but we have not seen what's being proposed, and so we'll be looking forward to evaluating that. Deepwater Wind has informed the town of Simsbury of its intention to file a petition for a declaratory ruling for renewable energy facility with the Connecticut Siting Council for construction of the Tobacco Valley Solar, which is a solar farm proposed for Simsbury on approximately 270 acres. Pursuant to state statute, the proposed solar project is not subject to the town of Simsbury's regulatory process due to the project's size, and is not subject to local zoning. While Deepwater has shared concept plans with the town and with residents and town staff, the town has not yet received the petition. When we do receive the petition, we will place it on the town website, but we have not yet received that. In the absence of any oversight or decision-making rule for the town on this significant project, party status is recommended to ensure that the environmental, safety, and economic issues, including impact to aesthetics, are properly raised with the Siting Council and that the public, and that there are public hearings on the project are offered so that residents will have a voice. We view our role as to facilitate your voice and to be there for you. That's an important part of our role. In order to ensure timely filing of the application to be designated as a party, approval for filing an application is sought now to avoid the need for a special meeting. We may be canceling our July meeting, so we just wanted to make sure that we had this authorization should it come in during the, during July. The Board of Selectmen has not taken any position, nor have town staff, on this, and no position is recommended with the submission of this application. By submitting this application, we are not taking a stand. We are reserving our right as a party in this deliberation. Again, we haven't seen the application. The board's role in this is limited, as this is a state-prescribed process with the state notification process. They're the ones who are responsible for notifying residents, the town. We have not yet received our notification from the state, other than, you know, when we reached out to the Siting Council and said, what is this? What is the process? But that was at our bidding. They have not still contacted us regarding this site. A state review process, and then ultimately a state decision. So I know that this is sort of strange, because when you think about zoning, you think it's local regulations, but in this case, it's a state overlay. If you think of the 830G applications that the town has seen, sometimes the state imposes their zoning over towns, and this is one of those situations. The policy decision as to whether this is a good idea or not was made by the state at the direction of the legislature. So we were not consulted on that. We were not consulted on whether to send out an RFP as well. The town will have the ability to participate fully in the proceedings with statements and concerns, and to ask questions of their experts and request additional documents. The town's role is to exercise its role wisely after reviewing the application and based on the facts as we know them, with the best intentions of the town in mind, and with due consideration to the specific impact on adjoining households, including environmental, safety, health, and otherwise, and economic impact, including aesthetics. So I open it up for discussion for members of the board. I think everyone was there. Sean was traveling at the meeting last week, but he is open to and welcomes comments as we all do on the board. Cheryl?
I just want to clarify, and for us as well as the public, because it was brought up in the public audience about the separation of this project from our prior considerations of the project at the landfill.
Yes.
Because it's my understanding there is no connection between the two. Our deliberations of that project had absolutely nothing to do with this because we did not know this one existed at the time, and we welcomed public comment on that project and requested further consideration by the party installing, and ultimately did not go forward. So I just thought we should be clear about that, because I know it was brought up several times, that somehow this board had prior knowledge, and we did not.
No, we found that after the RFP was awarded, when they became a finalist, through the Hartford Business Journal sends out that daily release. And we still have not been notified by the state, by the way. Just so that we're clarified.
So just to be clear, this does not have...
Short on the postage.
And while we did support installing solar panels at the landfill, we initiated the public process into that, and upon hearing safety concerns from the operator of the airport and other people, it ultimately failed. But, but that should have no impact on this project.
Yeah, and we have been in support of putting solar on the high school.
Absolutely, yeah, on town buildings and other projects.
And we worked with the Clean Energy Task Force to be a sustainable community as well. So, yes.
And just to clarify, one thing, I heard the term intervening party thrown out a couple times during public audience. That is not a thing. There's intervenor, and there is party, and they have different legal powers, and party is overwhelmingly what we have heard recommended as what is in the best interest of residents of Simsbury. So this is a party, and that is, that is what that is.
Sean?
I mean, clearly, I think this is an appropriate course here to take, obviously. This is a potentially significant event for our community, and whether folks are for or against it, it's important that we have a seat at the table to make sure that the entire municipality's interests are represented, and of course, preference of the folks that are living close by, to make sure that we're thinking appropriately about that. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's the right, right, right course of action.
Chris?
I mean, I think there's an easy decision and then a more difficult challenge ahead of us tonight. I mean, the first is, do we want to enter into party status? For me, that's very clearly yes. I think the more difficult challenge is, what do we begin to crystallize as our position as a community in stewardship to all parties and constituencies in Simsbury? So we have a range of options relative to some justifications to basically resist this proposal outright, to mitigation with some degree of support, to outright support, and we have voices within the community for all three of those. I do think if we wait to begin to crystallize that, we may be too late when it actually gets to the point where we really want to have a lot of influence. And so I know, Lisa, you've put a lot of thought into what our process will be going forward to interact with all the constituencies within the community, to do the type of research that people are asking us to do, and begin to crystallize our positions. For me personally, I have a very deep sense of stewardship to the individuals who are impacted by this, in particular because it is a, in essence, a use change from the current zoning, because it does include energy production. At the same time, as someone who actually grew up in that area, I grew up on Clifton Drive before these neighborhoods were even created, this area really does capture and reflect the character of Simsbury that so much of us value, so I think there's a stewardship to that. Our current plan of development puts a very high emphasis on preserving farmland, so we have a stewardship to that. And yet, at the same time, there are elements of this that are attractive to me as an appropriate use of the property that is more passive in comparison to other alternatives, that is more cost-efficient for the community, and also is more reversible for the community. So I actually start with an open mind relative to this actual proposal, but with a commitment to really have stewardship around those facts. I think it's going to take a lot of conversation for us to crystallize as to what's really the appropriate actions, and I do think we have to have a process that begins to get to that fairly quickly. I think in these processes, particularly if you don't have total control over the outcome, the more powerful our positions are going in, the more we actually influence it. I actually think the members of the community had some outstanding points tonight that they discussed. One of which, for me, is most powerful, is that there is a vulnerability to Connecticut statutes relative to this that are actually in process of being closed. And that's actually a very meaningful issue for me. Even if I support this, the fact that it's being approved under a statute that no longer exists is something that we would have to pay attention to. So Sean, I think you're absolutely right. This is a huge issue for this community on a host of levels. I have total confidence that we can manage this with good stewardship to the community. So I approve this, but I, I think it's really important that we begin to talk about what is our process going to be to crystallize our positions.
Mike?
I think this is something we should do. I think the party status, doing it now, as Chris pointed out, is more than appropriate. I have heard a number of differences of opinion or statements. I don't know what the facts are, and this is how I think we can get those facts, and I think that's very important for us to do for the town, because once you change a significant portion of town, it's changed. You can't. And then, at the same point, we have to be reflective and thoughtful about how we're going into the future, and I think this will give us the ability to do that. So I think this is something whose time has come, and thank you for putting this on as quick as you did, Lisa.
You're welcome. And I just, in terms of the process and opportunity for input in my first selectwoman's report, which I didn't get to, but it's really exciting, I do give updates on economic development. I do have a section on Deepwater Wind, but I do want to let folks know that they are, Deepwater Wind will be hosting a meeting on, let me see, June 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to talk a little bit more details about the project. They've said they've taken input from residents and are incorporating those into the proposal that they plan to put forward. Again, we have not seen that yet, but I think it's really important members of the public go there and ask specific questions. If it's, I don't want this solar farm and that's it, okay, then you may not have questions. But if you don't like this solar farm because of this, this, and this, make sure you ask those questions and see if they're willing to address them. They may or may not, I don't know. But come with, I would just ask people to come with very specific questions so that you can get those answers addressed. If it's no way, I don't ever want this, I hate, I don't like solar in Simsbury... If it's no way, "I don't ever want this, I don't like solar in Simsbury," that's a hard conversation to have at that meeting, but if you have, say, "I don't like it because this, this, and this," those are things that they can answer questions about, whether you agree with them or not, I don't know. But I would just encourage folks to do that. And then to remind folks that there will be another opportunity for input when Representative Hampton and Senator Wickos host their meeting, and they will be doing that with members of the Siding Council and hopefully someone from the State Department of Health or some other health expert. Because part of the reason it is that the state council is... We, obviously, don't have the ability to do research like the World Health Organization on EMS or other things like that. So we will... You know, the state has those resources to do that, and this is a state process, and it's important that you have access to people who have done this research, so you can ask them specifically about it. So we are looking forward to being stewards of this. I mentioned to Chris and opened it up to members of the Board of Selectmen. I'm happy to go walk in the neighborhood and let you guys know when I'm there, and you guys can come out and say, "Hey, this is what I'm concerned about, look here," or this, any of that.
I live over there.
I do, too. I'm the neighborhood of butter myself, so, yeah.
Or if you want any of us to walk with you or see your house, we're very willing to do that. Eileen Kenny has indicated that she's willing to meet from Deepwater Wind, so if you have specific questions of Deepwater Wind, really pick up the phone. Don't say they aren't listening without having tried to talk to them. So I don't know whether they'll listen or not, but I know they can't listen if you don't ask, to be heard. So I really encourage folks to reach out to them and express their views.
And I would yet again say, our previous meeting is on SCTV. You can pull it up on YouTube. It's 48-minute mark of the last meeting. Attorney DeCrescenzo was here and answered questions about the process and procedure. So, you know, step one, please watch that to see those questions answered, because it'll at least direct you where you want to go and in a productive manner.
Lisa, one other question?
Sure.
Do we know what the role of the property owner is in all this?
So if you are in a butter, you do have the ability to...
No, I mean the people who own the deals.
The people who own the land that's...
So they do have rights. You're absolutely... I mean, that's sort of the push and pull of it, right? Just as when you want to build a deck on the back of your house, you have a right to do that, as long as you follow the proper procedures. And you don't have to notify your neighbors until you file the application, and then it goes through. And this is, in some ways, like that. There are also interests of the property owner and what he can do with his property. There are questions of policy, like, did the state make the right policy call when they decided, "Yeah, we're going to let these farms on any form of land without restrictions on farms," or like what Massachusetts did, limited to that. Should they have made that decision? And, you know, I think that is totally fair to question, but that decision is made at the General Assembly. So there are lots of places where we have a right to be an advocate, and some of the decisions that were made in the past are impacting us today, and, you know, we're going to have to deal with the situation as we find it. I will say, the Senate bill that did pass, it has not yet been signed by the governor, but there is some question as to whether it will apply, even if it's filed before the July 1 deadline. I don't think it's clear. And we heard from counsel that he's going to be doing an evaluation of that, but the initial decision as to whether the Senate bill applies will be made by the Siding Council. And if we disagree with that, there's an appeal process after that, but they'll take the first stab at it. Obviously, we'll get legal counsel advice as to whether it does or doesn't apply. We'll be reaching out to the Connecticut Council Municipalities on that for as well. There are legislative lobbying group that looks at bills and to evaluate that. So I think that's still an open question as to whether that applies regardless of when they file the application. So we're still getting... And again, the governor has not yet signed it, so it's not a bill until it's signed by the governor. So we'll be watching all these developments over time. I know it's frustrating, because this is new. You think you understand zoning, that it's all done locally, and then you discover that the state has a right to impose it. But the thing we all forget, and that I've learned a very hard way, is that we are creatures of the state, and we get our power only when the state grants it. And they can hold back power. Sometimes they hold back that wisely and sometimes unwisely. You know, is this similar to the climax road situation? Is that a wise use of state power? I don't know. Is this a wise use of state power? I don't know. But what I can tell you is we have to deal with it, because this is the procedure that's out there. Once we get our notification, we will post it online, though, for folks, and try and do our best to keep you informed, and we will be making requests for a public hearing so that those who are not abutters have the right to have common. I will say, if you're in a butter, your rights, you get different rights than if you're just a member of the public, and sometimes the two. You can't do both. So you have to look at... You really want to read the rules and regulations and make sure you understand when you take a position, what that means in terms of your ability to participate in the process. But there is a way to participate, and, you know, we'll have Bob DiCrescenzo in if people have questions and talk about the process. But really, when the Siding Council comes to talk with Representative Hampton and Senator Wickos, that's where you want to bring your questions about what your role can be, because they will have someone from the Siding Council directly there who can answer your questions. So please, please, once we have that date, make sure you attend that and get the information you need.
Just, I think if we're informally talking about going into the neighborhoods and talking with people, it's probably... I think it would be best practice to identify a number of dates and post those, particularly if we end up with a nucleus of this group, we officially have a meeting, so.
Agreed. I think that would be the best approach. And Lisa, you had mentioned today that Griffin and Deepwater would have offered that they would do a structured walkthrough of the property, and I think scheduling...
Well, they're not structured. Eileen said she would be happy to meet with anyone on the property, yeah.
Right. I actually think it would be a very good activity to schedule that opportunity, but have members of the public that also could go through that walkthrough with us. It's part of the beginning of a dialogue and an understanding on a deeper level, in particular when you begin to talk about mitigation activities. This is where people can point to, you know, this setback is not going to work right here, because look at how close that house is. Look at what the pitch of the land is here. So if we do some mitigation activity at the road, it's going to look good or it's not going to look good. So I actually like the idea of having that be a fairly structured walkthrough that people could participate in.
For the Board of Selectmen, that the members of the public can participate in.
Yes.
Is that what your request is?
Yep.
Okay. Tom, can you please reach out to Deepwater Wind and see if we can get... Set that up. If you guys could please let me know what your availability is in the next couple of weeks in terms of travel or dates when you definitely can. We can go ahead and try and set that up. I mean, obviously, we can't force them to do this, but we will certainly make the request.
Right.
And, you know, I'll hold open houses. I'll put those out if people want to come and talk to me. And the other thing you should know is, when you call my office, I often answer the phone. People think you can't call the first selectman. Well, you know, we're pretty short-staffed in terms of the budget. I'm not supposed to advocate, but we're pretty lean, so I'm answering the phone a lot of the time. So you may very well reach me, and all these guys are super accessible. We all shop at, you know, the local Canes, Fitzgeralds. We're all in town. We're your neighbors. We literally are your neighbors. And so you should never hesitate to reach out to us.
What? I don't park the bank.
Some of us are better parkers than others. But you should never hesitate or think you can't reach out to us, because you can. And, you know, if you say to me, "Come join me for a cup of coffee," I'm in, because I like coffee. So...
She's easily bribed with chocolate.
That's true.
Chocolate.
All right.
So you need a motion?
But the point is, we're all available to meet with you, and you should not ever, ever hesitate reaching out to us, because we're, I mean, you know...
We got to live here, too.
Yeah, we got to live here, too, and we've got kids who went to the school here, and we're all committed to this place. And we want to do what's best, and, you know, we're going to try and do it as wisely and as carefully as we can and base it on facts that we have and that we see and that you give us. So, you know, we'll get through this process carefully and deliberately, and hopefully with a lot of your feedback, because what you say matters to us, and we appreciate that you're taking the time to reach out to us. It matters to us, and you make a difference, and don't think it doesn't.
It doesn't.
I mean, I don't know what kind of a difference it makes at the Siding Council, because we've never done this, but I can tell you it makes a difference to all of us. All of us listen to the comments. And not, as you saw on Wednesday night, not everyone agreed. And so we will be listening to everyone's comments and see, you know, where this road takes us. But I can tell you, we will listen. I can't tell you we're perfect, because we're not.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah. I knew that was coming. All right.
You need a motion, yes?
Yes. So may I... Let me get to my motion. May I have a motion to authorize the first selectman to seek party status before the Connecticut Siding Council for the Tobacco Valley Solar Proposal once it is submitted? I can't seek party status until it's submitted.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll go on. We've got a little jumbled here in our...
We're giving money back.
Yeah.
Forget the tax refunds.
Tax refunds, I know. You know, that's the most exciting part of this. So we'll go on to tax refunds. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $5,779.75?
So moved.
Okay. So we're going to go with Shawn and the motion?
Isn't it... Isn't it...
No. You take out the minute... You take out the firing.
Did I go the wrong way?
It's this one.
Five, seven, seven, nine, seven, eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Never mind. Shawn and then Cheryl, I believe.
Okay, so we'll go with Shawn. And Cheryl, did you make the second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. All right. The next one, Mike, would you like to refuse?
I'm going to recuse myself.
The next one we have before us is another exciting motion, and it is to authorize the first selectwoman to execute a contract with the Materials Innovation and Recycling Authority, MIRA, for municipal solid waste and recycling disposal. Before the board are two motions, and one will be a request to authorize the first selectwoman to execute a 10-year agreement with MIRA for the municipal solid waste and recycling disposal, and two, to set a public hearing to make modifications to the town's existing ordinances as they relate to the collection and disposal of municipal solid waste and recycling. And these modifications are necessary for compliance with the terms of the MIRA agreement and to clean up old and outdated language. And I believe Tom has recommendations of the ordinance change, which would be part of the notice once we get to that. I did want to thank Tom for doing research on this week. Tom did meet with me and Don Stein, who is the first selectman of Barkhamstead, who sits on MIRA. There is most... A majority of people who sit on MIRA are first selectmen or mayors. I believe it's a 51-member organization. So Tom, you want to walk us through what this is and why you're recommending it?
Okay. Starting... Well, we're going to go back five years ago. We had joined the CCSWA, the Central Connecticut Solid Waste Authority, which is a subset of CROG, Capital Region Council of Governments. CCSWA was formed at that time that the Mid-Connecticut Project, which had been in effect for 25 years, which was essentially the trash-to-energy project, which was run by CRA, was coming to a close. So I believe at the time, it was somewhere north of 25 towns banded together and said, "We'll go out to a competitive bid and see what the market is for trash and recycling." At that time, for the town of Simsbury, there was a lot of things in motion, and there was a lot of things in motion within the trash industry and the disposal and recycling world. We actually made a decision at that point to go with a five-year commitment to CRA. Since then, CRA has changed its name to MIRA. It's effectively the same thing. It's run by other municipal officials. It's a quasi-public organization. Five years ago, the one decision that we made that was unique was that we did not elect to have our curbside recycling go to CRA. At the time, the market for recycling was skyrocketing, and we were seeing prices being paid to the haulers of $25 a ton and up. And as it looked like at that time, with the separation of single-stream recycling and the ability to find new and exciting uses for the reuse of plastics and other things, we thought that that market was going to continue to climb. So what we did is, we allowed our trash haulers to select where they wanted to bring the recyclables, and in turn, they were paying us a recycling registration fee at the time it was set at $10. So for 2014 and 2015, we collected $10 a ton from the haulers in town. Somewhere in the middle of 2015, the market for these recyclables absolutely tanked. It went from that mid-20 range down to just about nothing. We put the program on hold, so they were still registered with us, they were still informing us that they were doing this collection, but there was no payments made to the town at that point. We didn't lose any money. If we had gone with CRA, it would have been the exact same thing for those years. So the difference is, now, flash forward, we went out through CCSWA last summer for a competitive process to see what was available in the MSW trash market and also for recyclables. For both of their RFPs, for trash and for recyclables, they had one respondent, which was MIRA. It went out to somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 potential disposal facilities. The consultant that was hired by CCSWA followed up with each of the industry leaders to find out why this wasn't... Why more people didn't respond, quite frankly. And the answer was that MIRA was providing a good product, and there was an overabundance in capacity at these other facilities within the region. With that being said, as much as five years ago, the MSW market had a lot of things in flux, different ways of disposing of trash. Right now, a lot of those technologies that were emerging at the time have stalled. Using the Trash-to-Energy Plant in Hartford is realistically the best option for Simsbury. If we were to go forward with the recommended 10-year program, we would be paying $68 a ton for disposal. The only other real option we have on the table is not to sign a contract and to let our haulers use market forces to drive what happens. I think in doing that, there's a great deal of risk to them, which then puts a level of risk on our residents. I think MIRA has really improved its operation over a number of years. They have some challenges ahead, but the nice thing is, as Lisa said, this is run by other municipal officials. They understand the pressures that this board is under, and should there be any level of catastrophic changes within the industry, there's a number of opt-out provisions in this program. So it really is, I think, the best way forward for the town. Provided we make the decision to go forward with the 10-year agreement, we have to change our ordinances to reflect flow controlling of the curbside recycling to MIRA. And then there's a number of smaller things within the ordinances that we're just generally cleaning up. Registration for trucks. I was supposed to be inspecting trucks and putting on stickers and things that we really don't do, and we just wanted to make sure that our ordinance reflected our actual processes. That's it.
Questions for Tom. First of all, I want to thank you for the research you gave into this and helping educate me about the process and recognize Don Stein for Barkhamstead, who took the time to come in with the representing for MIRA to explain it to me as well. This is... Appreciate the effort. This is something Mr. Roy is recommending, and that I am recommending to this board. I can open it up for questions at this point.
Just remind me of the per-ton cost we currently enjoy.
We are, right now, I believe it's $64 per ton.
Okay.
But keep in mind that the actual cost associated with whatever hauler it is that you choose to use from your home, the disposal is only a portion of the total cost for them to collect the trash.
Absolutely. Just wanted to understand the difference there.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Cheryl.
Tom, this doesn't change any of the other, like, special collections. We, as a town, hold, like, electronics, hazardous waste, any of those other things.
No, 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 none of that. In fact, some of what we're proposing to change in terms of the ordinances is to collect into our ordinance the fact that we're participating in paint care, for example, and some of those other things.
Right. So that's all stays the same?
Exactly.
None of the changes in this would affect that?
And household hazardous waste is coming up, not this weekend, I believe, the following weekend.
That's in my first selectwoman's...
Ah, see? Spoilers. Oh, see? Spoilers.
I know.
Desperate for information.
I know. I will give you that information. But first, may I have a motion to authorize the first selectwoman to execute a 10-year agreement with MIRA for municipal solid waste and recycling disposal?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We're going to need a date for the hearing. Do you have a proposed date?
I was thinking two-
Let's, we do it at the very next meeting at 6 o'clock.
At the 26th. That would be the 26th?
That's right. Exactly. So, yes.
Okay.
We need a motion to set a public hearing.
May I have a motion to set a public hearing for June 26th at 6:00 p.m. to make modifications to the town's existing ordinances as they relate to collection and disposal of municipal solid waste and recycling?
So moved.
You have a second? Guys, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. I did want to just do a super quick update-
Can we fetch Mike? Is Mike allowed back in?
Mike is allowed back in. Just to let folks know that referendum is tomorrow. Polls are open from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Henry James Memorial School.
Just you may want to formally table the one item that's on the agenda.
We still-
I have a motion to table the last item on there, which is the, approve the request of Fiddler's Green. But you know, we have not heard back from them on the agreement that we sent them for approval.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and table that. May I have that motion?
The vote.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Dog license renewals are underway the month of June. Please don't forget to do that. I do want to let know, folks know that Burgers on the Bridge will be held on June 14th. The Simsbury Public Library and Senior Center are offering a community summer kickoff for all on June 19th. There's a public meeting on the draft plan of conservation and development on June 13th. We strongly encourage members of the public to attend that. Very important document. It's a planning document for the town. Your attendance and participation is very welcome. Hazardous waste collection will be Saturday, June 17th at Simsbury Public Works from 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. There are a few other pieces of information in terms of economic development. I did want to highlight that the Silverman Group project has been updated, and so you may want to take a look at that. It's now being listed under permitted because on May 3rd, 2017, the Town Zoning Commission approved an application that was submitted on April 4th. And then I have also updated the Deepwater Wind Tobacco Valley Solar Project with the information about Deepwater Wind's open meeting on June 22nd from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And so we have one more thing to do, and that is appointments and resignations. I may have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Grace Camo with our thanks as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission effective May 19th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You also have before you the regular meeting minutes of May 22nd and the special meeting of May 24th. If there are any changes, please let me know. Otherwise, those minutes will stand as final. Any liaison or subcommittee reports?
Yeah, can I, can I do one?
Sure.
All right. So the, this is an update relative to the effort of the Executive Search Committee relative to recruiting for the town manager. The subgroup of that committee had an opportunity to get on the phone with Don Jutton today. And I just want to do a couple of highlights relative to key things that are going to be happening over the next couple of months. The first is Tom and Melissa working with Don had put together a proposed advertisement for recruiting resumes for the position. That is going to be finalized and posted by Don Jutton by this Friday with a date of having resumes submitted of July 21st. There is a list of about 10 places that the advertisement's going to be posted. A number of them are in newspapers and publications within New England, but a host of them are also with professional networking organizations that will reach out nationally. The other key thing that we just want to do an update on is there's an intensive element of this, which is really community outreach and feedback. So one of the first things is to put together a survey that can be utilized with the public as well as, as specific constituencies that we might identify. What the subcommittee wants to do is come back to our next board meeting with what we think that that survey should look like and have a conversation and have approval on the part of the board. So we'll keep updated along the way. I don't know, Cheryl or Sean, if there's anything else that you wanted to add.
Excellent summary of what we talked about.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
The vote.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
And I borrow the six of Spotty for just a brief update on something bargaining.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, Tom, I have a scheduling matter. I have to talk with you too.
Yeah, I gotta go park at the bank.
I thought I saw Jim Ray from Clean Energy.
Yeah, they're here.
Are they here now?
Yeah, I saw him in the hallway, just last couple items.